Can I make that little noise?
Yeah, and now it does look like an owl. This is the first time I'm seeing the eyes. Do you, are you good, Joe? Cool. Um, well, hi commissioners. Thank you for having us today. We have a presentation for you all about legislative priority proposals for the 2026 legislative session. We do have a little bit of time in the presentation to talk about the special, the special session, but really want to make sure that we're prioritizing the big one, um, in the 2026. And just want to go over our goals for the presentation and a little bit of timeline. We are also just want to flag that these are kind of the four departments or four issue areas that we will be walking through today. So CSWB, CED, Human Services, and a little tiny bit of Health Department, as we are not the Health Department. Our goals for today is to really just get direction from you all. Over the past couple of months, honestly, since Kristen came on board, she's just been sharing with me legislative ideas or legislative kind of priorities or, or just concepts that you all have brought up to her. And so we tried to compile this presentation to pull those all together so that we can get clarity from the full board on, hey, these are the things we think are really important, that we need a state fix for. These are the things that we want. You know, to think more creatively at the county level. These are things we want to reach out to partners about. And then maybe these are some things that we can put in the parking lot for now due to, you know, just something, other things occurring in our world these days. So we'll walk through the full list with you all and just talk about those issues. This is our kind of loose timeline for you all heading into the regular session. Obviously, there is a special session in this timeline, so things might change because of that. But we really want to make sure that by the end of today, we're able to at least have direction for what staff, including myself and, you know, our county attorney team or our different departments should really dig into what concepts are kind of top priorities. And then hopefully at the end of this, in the later half of this month, and the beginning of next month, we can work with our teams to really drill down into language and specifics in hopes of really starting to get sign on and education as we see and communicate with our delegation members in the next couple of months. Because of our switch that is happening with our lobbyist contract, I'm going to be reaching out to all of our delegation members to meet one-on-one with them, just, just in case during the transition, they know that I'm here, things like that. And so I would really love to have these priorities to be able to speak with them with. I also am getting married at the end of the month. So I, I do want to flag that there, I will be out for a little bit, which is why I, I will start meeting with the delegation members in September when I'm back. Because we will get to see their lovely faces at special session next week.
And just to, to pin that kind of conversation, because we're on it and not something to dive into today, but I was just talking to Representative Wilford and she's like, I would love just to sit down and have a conversation with all of the board. She's like, I don't want food. I don't want a restaurant. She's like, I just want to sit down and talk to you guys about your priorities. And then what the impacts are for, you know, for the Medicaid cuts and everything like that. I mean, so like if that could be something that we look at scheduling, maybe on October, November even, of just like a sit down that's not fancy or loud. Because people want to have a real conversation. And so I think that could be really helpful as we kind of plan this into then advocating for, you know, whatever our decisions are today would be nice.
And I think we're, we're hope, not, I shouldn't say hopeful. We are planning on continuing to compile like data on impacts and data on kind of, you know, I shared some data with you about the, from the Division of Insurance, just putting that all in one place for the special session, but also that data doesn't really change post-special session. So using that in all of our outreach through the fall to remind them, because I think some of us who were on the CCAT meeting last week, a lot of the delegation members who, they, I don't want to say they don't think about the local governments, but you know, just they're doing their jobs. They're thinking about the state. And so we want to make sure that we continue to remind them that we've been trying for many sessions, but now more than ever, the local governments are really, are really feeling it. And we want to make sure that they have the data as well as the the, the whole story, not just an email with the numbers, but more of a, a conversation. But I can flag that as well. And I know that we're very lucky. Representative Wilford always reaches directly out to us when she has questions. And so, but making sure that all of our delegation members feel that, that same way.
Yeah, no, that'd be great.
There are two slides here. So this is just a brief overview of the list of things we're going to go over today. We will also have this full list at the end of the presentation when we kind of get to decision-making time. So you can see everything. But under community and safety well-being, we have reform code enforcement and civil infraction processes. Consider public nuance enforcement. Community and economic development does have a pretty lengthy list, but they are divided into kind of two buckets. But these are also just ideas that we were, were shared with us. So I want to make sure that the language isn't like, this is what we want to do. This was just the concepts. Establish mandatory business licensing authority in unincorporated Adams County. Assess county authority over private gentlemen's clubs. Expand regulatory authority over short-term rentals. Examine eminent domain by metropolitan districts and special districts. Explore aerospace industry incentives and partnerships with OEDIT and evaluate data centers, incentives and their economic infrastructure impacts. Under Human Services, there's so much going on in the Human Services space. We don't really have specific policy proposals for you all. It's more of the policy strategy. So develop clear messaging on federal policy impacts. Support CCI and other partners in their proposals if needed. And then strengthen state-level advocacy and defense, similar to what we were just discussing. And then the Adams County Health Department, this was an issue that was brought to me from the department saying that maybe the board might be interested in a policy around this. So that is where that came from, at addressing mobile home parks concerns, including sewage and public health issues. So that we also just have a slide at the end to talk through that and, you know, mostly just strategy on what we all want, what the board wants Adams County staff to do alongside the Health Department. Do you want to talk about that one right now? I have a slide at the end of the presentation for that. You had to talk through that. Yeah. And then just want to flag that these are kind of the people that we have been talking with through this conversation, as well as we plan to continue to talk with. So internally, we have our Legislative Committee, which has members from every department at the county on it. I've worked and communicated with a lot of our department directors, specifically the ones who are covered today. And then our county attorney's office, who you'll hear from today during our presentation as well, just they've been really helpful because these are really complex issues. A lot of issues that we'll talk about today are not kind of like a easy fix sadly, more of like a complex legal conversation. And then CCI, CCAT, CML, and CSOC are just other organizations that we're thinking kind of ahead. If we were to take up any of these issues, these are the people that we would want to make sure we're coordinating with and communicating with moving forward. The next couple of slides are potential concepts and what are we trying to actually do today? We want to make sure we, we get from you all, like what is the problem, try, we're trying to fix. So again, I'm, we tried to encapsulate it in this, in this presentation, but if there is something that you're like, oh, this actually wasn't the issue that we were really focused on, please feel free to share. We want to make sure we're doing what the board has requested. And then is state legislation what's actually needed? You know, some of these issues kind of overlap between county and state powers and maybe is the first, it might be something else depending on, you know, what the board would like. The next thing is how should we fix it? If the board has any ideas, but we have also communicated with our staff of some, some strategies that we think might be a, a good angle. And then the political considerations, especially now in the local government space, there's a lot going on, which is not a secret, but and with the state as well, what are some of the political considerations? Who would be our opposition? Who are some people that you would all want us to reach out to if we were to take up a policy priority? And so I'll go into the first issue area, which is community safety and well-being, which actually Heidi will be discussing because just of the complexity of the issue. And Jennifer has also helped us as well.
Okay. So, um, I think there are a couple really kind of simple ideas here for code enforcement. And in fact, Jennifer, did you have a chance to look at what the other counties have already proposed?
I have a slide, the next slide.
So others are identifying these issues as well. And so I think that many of these are similar and we could definitely work with these other counties on incorporating our suggestions too. You know, like, for example, the fact that only the sheriff can issue these citations has been a bit of a challenge for us because the sheriff puts his own requirements on what that would look like. And then having that direct personal knowledge of violations really has been an issue. So you know, the land use case that came not too long ago where a neighbor was saying, well, I get all this dust in front of the landfill. And code officers are saying, but when we go out, we don't see it and they have to personally observe it. That's really problematic. You know, in other situations, you would be able to use their photographs or something like that. And then the lack of escalating penalties. I mean, when the most you're going to get is a hundred dollars, no matter how many times you do this, it's not much of a deterrent. So, and, and again, I, I think that that is addressed by the other counties as well. So we could definitely get our proposals in with those. We've had a lot of internal, of county to county conversations about this. Cassandra, who does our code enforcement, actually organized an event at our county attorney's summer conference. And so I think we're all on the same page at least.
Yeah. And just again, I'll switch to the next slide. There are two other counties, which I think we're not alone in this. Our county attorney team has communicated a lot with other front range counties as well, but these were two proposals that were made formally through CCI this year, addressing this issue. So again, on this issue, we have a lot of allies. It is something that other counties are thinking about. And so as staff, we think that this is a good issue. There are other people interested. There are policy, policy ideas floating and
Can we see the bottom of the screen? Because what I will, I will tell you, what I'm interested in is empowering our code enforcement team to take action. Or what, whatever we would deem as opposed, because the whole, if these are still court fixes, that is my, that is the concern for me.
So that's actually another slide. We're going to talk about nuisance powers separately.
Okay.
I think that's what you're getting at, right?
Right, but nuisance meaning could also be the, could, could follow, could be a code, could be a new, a code violation defined as nuisance if it's because it's of its maybe.
I had just suggested that I think the concept of us having more powers in general is another discussion. This is really just trying to get some tweaks to what we already have.
Oh, okay.
That we think is probably doable. I mean, I could be wrong. But I don't think, I don't think these suggestions are dramatic in terms of probably not likely to meet a lot of resistance from the cities or anyone else that would help us do, help us more effectively do the power we already have. And then we do have another discussion.
To expand.
Okay, alright.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for clarifying. Because I would, yeah.
Yeah. So this would be something that we would hope to work alongside our county attorneys, other county attorneys to fix problems in the law that we know are there. And this would not be expanding any, this would just be making it so that it works better for counties.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
And then she, so one second. Can use the keyboard. There you go. Again, this was just kind of what we were just saying. And then, so then this was the next piece about possible expanding of powers. And I'll hand this back to.
Yeah. And poor Jillian, I think I made her crazy trying to understand this issue as well.
No, I really appreciate it because it is very complex.
So, as it, yeah. So my stance from the board is that, you know, we would like to get to a place where our code enforcement powers look more like a city, right? In terms of additional things that we can go after and then different processes that are much more streamlined in most city codes than it is under state statute. Now, this, I think this is a much bigger act, right?
Yeah.
I think that, you know, we, at least I, my office has not had any communication with other counties to see if there are others who want this, right? And then I think that if we want to go down this path, it would be pretty extensive in terms of the number of areas in current state statute that would need to be revised to make this happen. So it would be more like what we did with CRA, where we brought in somebody to kind of focus on that particular function. And, you know, when in the five places in statute that would need to be revised to do that. So I guess what I'm saying is this would be a a big undertaking.
Yeah.
It would be a pretty long bill in the end, probably. And certainly my office can help, but I don't know that I have anyone who can currently dedicate the time to get this done in time for this legislative session. And so I don't know if that, if we want to take on this big picture of increasing county towers in this area, we might want to consider bringing in somebody to just focus on this for a little bit. Like we did with CRA.
Yeah. And, and one of the things too is, you know, we, we didn't have this list or presentation ready for when the CCI and CCAT did their call for legislative priorities for 2026. I actually think that this work doesn't necessarily mean like, Heidi, this is now your job to move forward. I think it's, if this is something that we do want to move forward, we're probably going to find a friend somewhere at CCI or CCAT or both, who also wants to do this work. And so that work could actually be handed off to, you know, a working group in that setting and not necessarily something we need to all, it's not our, our lift to do a hundred percent. So I, I would, I think that this is something that we would like to look at. And getting other kind of legislative minds at least thinking about this topic. Is it a really long bill where we're editing all these statutes? Is there other, another way of, of getting to this point? I'm not quite sure, but I, I don't know. I, it seems to be a pretty important issue among this board. You guys could weigh in if you'd like of something we would want to continue to, to try.
I brought this up because this is when, when residents come to us and outline a problem that we can all empathize with and it's, that definitely is something that needs to be looked at or investigated. That's impacting not only their quality of life, but possibly their, their health and safety and their property, their, their right to, you know, try to maintain the value of their property by not having adverse activity, you know, really disallowed activity, but for us not to have the bandwidth or the tools to respond. This is, we, this is, I mean, that is why I want to be in local government is to do things for people. And I am not content. I cannot live with giving anybody the answer. We don't, you know, palms up, shrug. I, I can't. So I really think that we need to do something to try to be responsive to people rather than just let it saying, yeah, we care. Oops, can't, can't do anything though. So I, I think we need to identify. And I don't know how. So you're, are you saying, Heidi, that even if it were kind of a, if we, a narrow scope, it would, it could still impact multiple statutes. So it could be, that would make, that would would, is what would make it what you're calling along.
I guess I'm just thinking that it's not a narrow scope because I think that you're, you're broadening the powers of counties, which is always a big deal. For whatever reason, the state really likes to keep us in our spot. And so that is a hurdle. And I think the more support to Julie's point, the more we had a, a group.
Oh yeah, we definitely do.
I think that that would, I think that would be helpful. And so I do think it, it's a bigger, it's a bigger picture. I mean, I suppose it could be as simple as statutory counties can write charters on their own, but we're never going to get that.
Yeah, no, 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 no. That would people, I, yeah, no, I know.
So I, I think it, I just think it's complex. And again, I don't mean to be saying my office can't help. We absolutely we can work on it. But I guess my thought was, I don't think this is something we can draft tomorrow and be ready to present. I think it's probably more of a start the outreach to other counties. Start to see what the interest is. See how far people want to go, right? Because I think there's some things that might be fairly easy, like that, that state nuisance statute that I showed you that actually does allow the district attorney to go after certain businesses for some of these things. Maybe we get authority for your county attorneys to do that, because then you guys have control over that instead of the district attorney. That's kind of a, I'm not saying it'd be an easy to get past, but it would be an easy to draft change, right? Versus having our own court system, I think would be huge and really help, like municipal courts. I think that's probably an, a even bigger challenge to get.
True.
Right?
True.
So again, we're, we're happy to, to do whatever you want. I'm just thinking that this is not going to be a simple write a bill and have it introduced to sure.
Yeah, it looks like others are taking the lead with CCI. On this, not on this issue.
Not on this issue. It was the other.
The other issues I think are very doable. It's, it's the bigger picture, expanding our nuisance powers and tools.
Okay, so I'm hearing it's going to be difficult to complete drafting the deadline for 2026. That's a consideration. So this is something that we want, is your, is your ask, we want to pursue it this year? Do we want to study it for a while and go for next year?
Yeah, I think that's. Yeah, I think so. There's like the civil infraction process, which is the stuff that is kind of in, you know, some other counties have been thinking about proposed to CCI, something that our staff feels, our county attorney staffs feels like they would like to participate in helping that issue. And then there's the public nuisance issue, which would, we think would probably need a little bit more outreach to other counties, seeing if this is something that they've also kind of realized the two different buckets there and maybe building a work group through CCAT and CCI, or even I can reach out to the counties that have policy staff counterparts and see if it's something that they can reach out and do some digging, so that we can just build a little bit more of like a understanding of where other counties are on this issue before that next step of like an actual bill draft. But the civil infraction thing, I think we feel like we could really.
I'm, I'm really glad about that one. I think, yeah, that's definitely, yeah, we definitely want to pursue that one. And if this is going to take up, then I do want to prioritize this as something that, I know, not for twenty, that we're saying 26 is probably not going to happen. But yeah, definitely.
I like your idea of the county attorney, because the district attorney, they're busy and they have their own priorities when they come into office. So this fills more on the operational, more of a static where it should live. I think more stability. Steve?
So great. Like, like, I think it's kind of happening organically here, kind of like, like phased approach to eventually getting to that ultimate power. And I like these other proposals that are out there. I think it moves the needle in the right direction. The Morgan and the Grand piece, but then also that one little piece that you said is if we could just simply take that part that says the county district attorney, the district attorney, and you say comma, and the county attorney or the county attorney, those might be easier to get in. But I do think like it is, it does make sense. I guess I'm confused by this slide where it says that you have to have your own court system to do it. Like, we have ordinances right now that don't require us to have our own court system, right?
No, I'm sorry. It's not that it would require it and certainly not that nuisance statute. I'm sorry. I think what Kathy specifically asked for in terms of having similar process to what Thornton had, I think would require your own courts. You want to move things more quickly. You want some assurance that your judge is going to support the nuisance needs of your jurisdiction, right? Like that, my point there is that the reason these things move quicker and are enforced a little heavier in cities is because the judge is hired by the city and has the city's interests at heart.
Well, that's probably not something that should be the reason why they get expedited attention is because their bosses are also the prosecutors. And also their bosses are also the rule makers. I would like to think that that's a frustrating answer, not to your fault, but I, I do think it's a reality of stakeholding them. Because I just don't want us to make this mountain out of a molehill where the only way that we're going to get attention is by creating our own justice system. But what we can do through stakeholding is point out where there's crap in the community and that we're trying to avoid tho, those things. We need to clean up the crap. We need to address the issues. And there might be ways to do it in this phase approach. So I'd like for us to be specific if we can on what we want to accomplish this year by jumping in and supporting some of these other, other county departments. And then also, if Heidi thinks that maybe this year we can do a very, very specific adding or the county attorney's office to that piece that says right now only the district attorney's office. We can do those three things this year.
Which slide are you looking at?
Looking at the one that's in front of us. For the county attorney piece. The other two are the ones that were led by someone else. Jen?
So what, the piece that allows the district attorney to bring these actions is under the criminal code. And the entire legislative background talks about it being a matter of statewide concern and giving the authority to the district attorney to bring these nuisance actions against businesses. And so I feel like if we just come out of the gate and say, District Attorney in Title 16 or County Attorney, I don't think that that's going to go very far because we don't operate in Title 16, which is the criminal code.
Okay. My question is, are you, are you talking about nuisance? Enforcing nuisance issues against businesses only? Are you, I mean, are you talking specifically about businesses?
So the, the class one business nuisance, class one public nuisance that we're talking about, that the district attorney can bring are against these larger businesses. They're, they're public nuisances. And then there's a long list of what's happening. It's usually businesses or hotels with illegal activity occurring.
Because what I'm talking about are, is our residential or privately, private property where, where people like the, you know, the example I go back to is the neighbors who came in several months ago and said, yeah, we are zoned, what was it? A1? Is that small egg? Yeah. Where they're like, yeah, we can have home-based businesses. And then they said, but we have neighbors now who are driving trucks of all types on and off the property at all times of night dumping stuff. We don't have any idea what it is. And if that's what's constituting running a business, you know, and that, that's the kind of stuff I want to be able to respond to. That's, that's either a nuisance or something, you know, that's the type of stuff I'm talking about in addition to businesses, but I'm talking about being able to respond to people who have bad neighbors who know that that they are going to have a long runway to keep doing whatever it is they're doing before they face a consequence that actually is not a consequence and therefore it doesn't stop. And that, and that we are, and that leaves us with nothing to do with this. That's what I'm trying to get away from.
I think there's two kind of different, different goals here. I think you're, what you're talking about, we have the power to enforce that. It's just a slow process without a lot of tea.
Yeah. And then, right. So to me, to me, we don't have a process. To me, we don't. I mean, technically on paper we do, but in reality we don't.
Okay. And then I think what Steve's talking about, the examples he has given, you know, with these hotels where we know there's a lot of crime. And it may not be the hotel purveyor.
Recommitting the crime.
But we know this property is a continued problem. There is a state statute that allows a criminal case to be brought against that property. It just can only be brought by the district attorney. And to Jennifer's point, that because it's entitled 16. And Jennifer's just saying this may not be an easy fix, but it doesn't mean we still couldn't ask that the county attorney have a similar authority. It just wouldn't be as simple as saying, or county attorney. It just wouldn't be as simple as saying, or County Attorney.
So I think we need to parse out what what it is we want to change, and how and how and how many actions we need to pursue to get the results that we are, that we're, that we decide we're going after.
Well, and and we'll also need to think about too, right, is what language makes sense in this? So, for example, adding the language in this Title sixteen, whatever that says, you know, district attorney or county attorney, that's not really gonna be doable, but can you do end county attorney under these situations? This is when a county attorney could act versus a district attorney, like, so, I mean, there's you have to play with the language to figure out what makes it politically feasible. Um, and that is obviously insight from more of a a lobbyist perspective of.
And there's different paths these are gonna go, if somebody, I mean, if going back to the situation I described, private property, some, somebody's do- doing some kind of a business evidently that, you know, that we don't, that we don't know what it is, their neighbors don't know what it is. That's that's one type of nuisance, and that, you know, if we, if we have, if we are allowed, our code officers can get information, people use that to to enact that, then maybe it does go to the district attorney. All same thing with the with the hotel, but we need to be able to to document, cite, create the paper, create the case that then goes, this is, we've, we have had, we have the authority to identify this as a public nuisance, we have done this, here you go. So I don't know if it, so not to say that we don't want, maybe there are places where we do want county attorney to.
Trust me, I don't want to do it.
So I'm, so I'm not sure which path, I I so I guess I'm trying to, you know, flesh out, like, what path are we gonna take here?
Well, I think also just to to go back to what we talked about a little bit earlier with the civil infraction process and some of the ideas of beefing the civil infraction process up, so like, some of the things that you're mentioning could be things that we could make sure are added into a civil infraction process legis- piece of legislation, like, we need to be able, people need to be able to document what's happening, and it can't just be the code. That could be a different, yeah, like a different angle.
Which seems like what some of the, going back to the slide where the some of the other counties are having discussions about.
Yes, yes, so they live in like different areas of the statute, but for the civil infraction process, if we work with these other counties, this, that could be a space where we work with our county attorney office to say, what are, what are some things we wanna make sure we include in a civil infraction process fixed bill that make it so that later on in those processes, we have more evidence, we have more teeth, we have more, the fines can be higher, those kinds of things.
Yeah, okay, I like that.
And so Morgan and Grant, they're planning to run these, this.
These are just proposals that they do to CCI, CCI doesn't vote until uh, the middle of October on what proposals they're gonna move forward. But if today, if this is something that you guys say like, yes, please go forward, I will be reaching out directly to CCI and to both of these counties saying like, Adams County really wants to go like ten toes in on this issue, and we would love to like um, help and wanna make sure that, because they had already at CCI talked about Morgan and Grand County are gonna be meeting to combine their proposals, so if it's something that we could also join and combine um, and work alongside.
So that's, I'm sorry, I missed that conversation.
Okay, that, yeah, I I think that that's exactly what Kathy's talking about, is building up and beefing up this civil infraction.
I love this as first, as as the first next step.
And to Steve's point, I do think there's kind of some strategy in building, right? Like, let's see if we can get this stuff passed, give it some time, see if it helps, and then kind of reevaluate, like, where are we still missing, like, what is still, you know, I mean, I think, and and again, maybe, you know, we shouldn't have put this on this slide, but I think the reason I brought up the courts is just when, when Kathy asks, how do we get to be the same as the cities? To me, that's a big distinction.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's the lawyer brain versus the commissioner brain, like, I just find, I just, you know, but so, but we're really have a conversation and continue to think about it.
I think one thing, though, that this public nuisance conversation is all about, though, is really that oversight of businesses, which is different than what Kathy is talking about. And so that oversight of businesses is something, though. And so.
Cuz right now, I don't have any authority to go after anyone for crime keeps happening on your property. Like that, that doesn't violate our our development standards and regulations, that's not something code can go after, that's not something I can go after. The only person that could go after that is the district attorney, and as far as I know, that statute has never been used.
Cause it's, it's not your typical.
No, I get it, but that's something we need to change too, we can't just.
A a slide about that as well, a little bit later, Joe, about the business.
Oh, okay.
Business licensing and business.
Slightly different kind of part of the conversation, but.
Lever to pull about bad behavior, oh, I'm a business, but.
Without saying like, now the county attorney has all the things of a district attorney, but other ways that we can, yeah, other ways that we can pull those levers, similar to the civil infraction versus public nuance conversation on a different.
I think, if I'm right, I, here's, here's how this is playing out in my head. We just spent the last ten years since the murder at the Primrose Motel, where it was brutal, horrible, and for ten years, people have been asking us, including the victims' family, to shut stuff down. We've been saying that we don't have the powers to do it, and then law enforcement is saying that the county needs to act. This has been consistent for ten years, and so when I hear the county needs to act, the county needs to act, then it comes back to us, and today, the clarification is only the DA can do certain things, that throws it right back at law enforcement. And I can't give a straight answer to the victims' families or people in our community that are dealing with all this crap. Okay, where people are literally being like either like murdered, raped, trafficked. These are the things that are happening in these hotels and motels, and unless we can figure out and say that this has got to end, and we need to have the powers to address it, what I can't do is the ping pong of not my job. And so we need to figure this out and and end that as soon as possible, because I feel like we just got another volley back across the the net today, and I need us to like. We did to an e- extent, what I'm saying that is that we have to be able to in a very, the, and I am looking at the presentation that you gave us earlier about licensing authority versus civil, versus the county nuisance, versus city nuisance. These are all different tools in the tool belt, what I would like to see is a way for us to be able to better explain that to the community. And also, clearly, we need to understand with some stakeholders, including law enforcement, prosecution, including law enforcement, actual law enforcement officers and investigators, and maybe the judges, how do we address the problem? And what tools do we have in the tool belt? Because I feel like we're talking about this, they may have a different perspective on this. We may not even be talking about the same problem, the same tools, the same approach. But if we were to get the stakeholders together in the same room, you get the chief judge or whoever's dealing with this, you get law enforcement, meaning like sheriff and maybe the police, few police departments, you get the DA, and you get folks in your office, and you get code enforcement. This is what I've been wanting us to do for fifteen years now, is to have that quad of the DA, CA, law enforcement and code enforcement working together. But if we can get those folks in the same room and say, what do we do with a situation like this? And we figure out what tools are, and wherever the gaps are, we fill those gaps. That's what we need to do. It's been one of those things, and of course, if there's a little bit more of uh, urgency I have, cuz I have some sort of demise in this role, so I gotta make sure that I'm gonna do the best I can uh, to to advance this, because it has been one thing after another, new sheriff, new sheriff, new sheriff, new DA, COVID. There's always some sort of thing that has taken us off track on this issue, at the end of the day, there's still a lot of that crap that's happening in those neighborhoods. And a lot of people are being victimized in those locations, and so I I will admit, like, there's some things that, at the end here, I'm like, I gotta be aggressive on this. It's not a fault of anyone here, we've been doing the best we can, but we gotta just figure out what do we do. So I like the idea that you proposed, Heidi, as saying like, let's look at what some of these other counties do, let's bolster some of the existing tools, sharpen the tools that we have. Let's see about the limited expansion or whatever to maybe some of the other tools we don't have, but at least an introductory ability to use those. Or gotta deal with the DA that that we need to do and have to use, that's focused on neighborhood enforcement, okay? I mean, that's an option, alright, it may be, we can spend two hundred thousand dollars on lobbying to change the law, but maybe it's spending a certain amount of money to make sure we have dedicated folks towards that. That's what I'm saying, is there's ways in which we can look at this, we just gotta end what's going on. I mean, it is destroying some of these neighborhoods and destroying lives, and and so I love the idea, phased approach, but I gotta say, if we're gonna kick the can down the road on some of these bigger picture things.
No, 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 I.
Next year, like the big stuff.
No, I I I I'm not accepting any kind of kicking the can down the road, it's it's good, it's it's a, it's a, it's a plan of first this, then this, simultaneously this, in, you know.
Yes, moving in the right direction.
It's not ev- everything everywhere all at once, but it's a plan to get where we wanna go.
Then I could support that, so thank you.
That's what I'm talking about.
So I think you bring up a really good point, and it goes back to, probably need to stakehold this internally. Goes back to the deadline for twenty twenty six, because um, you're right, there's a turnover, has been a turnover in the sheriff's office, and a lot needs to be teased out there, because everyone's throwing up their hands saying, there is no teeth. There's no teeth, um, I see the problem, but there's no teeth, and then they walk away from it. So I think we all need to meet, as you said, those four groups. Um, to tease some of this out of what does it look like, how do we best support community?
But for staff today.
And we'll make sure, of of course, we'll, we'll update you all as we are able to work and get a little bit more of like, this is the policy idea. They double checking that, everything that you all wanna make sure is included is included. And our, I I would, I would imagine that our county attorneys have probably even more of a, there are a lot of little things that we need to fix in in that um, infraction process statute.
So so let let me clarify this, I love the the idea of the face approaches, go with some of those ones that are being proposed. Talk about on the edge of that one where if we can, I really don't know how we're gonna get certain prosecutorial powers, unless you say we do it in this other area, because I do know you are allowed to bring some so prosecute some things.
The these civil infractions, unfortunately, though, the only, we used to have, used to say we can bring criminal or civil.
That's right.
And criminal was broader. Um, now it says we can bring civil or a civil infraction, and civil infraction is only a hundred dollar.
Which is part of what we're talking about, we need to get up to two thousand dollars if we need to.
So I guess the only reason I say that is, in fact, the legislature has tried to get the county attorney even less prosecutorial power than we used to have.
That's cuz the legislature has, over the course of time, recently been trying to reduce all criminal.
Decriminalize.
Maybe succeeding in some areas, but truly failing in others, even Washington and Oregon have reversed some of those efforts. And so uh, I think it's fair to say that we look where we can. I guess my question is, is there any reason we can't allow us to tell Heidi uh, and and Dion? Can we start the stakeholding on the big picture stuff now, as it's a concurrent effort with the items that we brought up separately? And I, if you want executive presence there for the discussion, if you allow me, I'd be ha- happy to work with Dion and Heidi where I'm participating in those discussions, cuz I have relationships with the judges, and and we could get Brian Mason involved. Because what we don't want is for that Dateline NBC type thing that's coming out soon on the Hell Hotel or whatever it is, and for that, there to be a lot of finger pointing within our teams.
We still have a plan.
And we need to be able to show the plan that we've, we've tried to initiate a few times, but I don't wanna do is have everyone responding to a bunch of emotional. Not my fault, blame stormy, what we need to do is start brainstorming.
For what it's worth, I think starting with the elected officials and maybe Steve being your representative would be great. Because if the DA and the sheriff don't set the tone for their teams, I don't get anywhere. And so I think if we could start there, and then maybe Dion and I can work with staffs on what comes out of that, I agree. And I don't mean I won't participate, I'm happy to participate in any way, I just think having their.
In the past, it's been a brick wall. And it won't be anymore.
Thank you.
Alright, so the, I do wanna flag, we have just uh, the next slide's about special session, and then we have Ben and Lauren's, and then we have a little bit more, so.
Keep it moving.
Um, so special. We're very excited to hear about that priority, honestly, I'm really happy to hear that we will be able to work on the especially after talking with our internal staff. Special session, we put it kind of under human services, but obviously, as you all know, it is an expand, an an expanded issue area. We are gonna, you all, we got a study session scheduled with you all um, and me next Thursday at two thirty PM. So hopefully, we'll have a little bit more of at least what was introduced by then. Um, I did wanna flag that we were able to get one draft of one of the bills. One, um, we're still, we're hoping for some more, but uh, thus far, um, we have looked at one of the drafts of one of the AI bills. But it did come out this morning um, in an interview with Senator Rodriguez, who is the AI guy. He uh, does not feel hopeful, he does not feel hopeful that there will be any sort of path forward, because he, he said in the interview with Axios that the, you know, the AI stakeholders just wanna kill his bill and kill his idea, and he's not willing to come to the table to do that. So I say that, and then we did loo- look at one of the drafts, and um, we have been communicating with CCI just about, they imagine that there will be some county nexus, but not exactly, like, local governments aren't called out in the AI draft, but it would have impacts on us as employers. Um, and so we are working with uh, C- CCI in that capacity, our county attorneys were able to review the first draft, but we, we're not exactly sure which one will be introduced, and we do know that there is a competing AI draft. And so I'm, I'm hopeful that in the next couple days, um, Lauren and I.
So how many bills are? There are two, two.
There are two AI bills. We've only been able to see one.
Oh, thank you.
Um, yeah, sorry, um, and, but we know that there are two, and now we do know that Robert Rodriguez does not like one of them. And so, um, that will be interesting. Um, but I wanted to let you all know that in the time leading up to the special session, as I imagine you will be seeing some of our delegation members, you will be around um, the county, we are gonna work together, me and Lauren are working on pulling together as much of the data that we've shared with you all in the past, shared in these past couple weeks since the pass of the big beautiful bill into one document for you all, so that when you are talking to the delegation members, you're able to say, hey, like, a lot's going on, but these are, these are the the other impacts, separate separate from the AI bill, there are, there are actual impacts happening in the counties, these are, these are the numbers. Um, and I will plan on making sure I'm communicating with the delegation members as much as possible, and we will have Alan down at the Capitol keeping us in the loop, um, we will be down at the Capitol, um, just making sure that we are getting as as much information as we can as as things progress, but as you all know, these are um, crazy times in general, and then a special session is always kind of crazy, um, so, and this is, this one has a lot more topics than the more recent ones. Um, they did draft the um, executive order for the special session pretty narrowly, but it it does cover a lot of issues. We do know that the Republicans are planning on filibustering everything. Um, and they, the most recent uh, guess is that the special session will be five days long. And so they'll do Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Monday, Tuesday. That's the guess from Mark Ferndino, um, just because of the complexity of a lot of the issues that we'll be talking about. And the Republicans do plan on introducing some bills um, around reproductive healthcare in the opposite direction. So there will be a lot of time for filibustering for that. I wanted to just open it up, I know that a lot is happening, and so you all have different connections than we have, so if there are any other things that you're hearing about it, that you want staff to look into, or that you want staff to look at, please feel free to reach out. We are trying our best, but even, you know, at CCAT on Friday, we heard from Dylan Roberts that he hasn't even seen a lot of the drafts. We had, a lot of the delegation members don't really know what exactly is gonna happen, they're just gonna show up and do what they're supposed to. So um, we are, any information is good information for us, so we're, we're happy to help, and we will be making sure we communicate with you as much as possible um, via email with information, data, just if if there are any questions that come your way. We wanna make sure that, obviously, there's very specific topics being covered at at the special session, but we wanna make sure that we're reminding them all of the other impacts that are simultaneously happening. Um, for counties and continuing that same narrative, that we understand that things are hard at the state. If things are hard at the state, they're also hard in the, in the local governments, and just reminding that, so we'll pull together talking points and data for you all, and in your inbox, there is some data from uh, the Department of Insurance around the reinsurance issue, which is a very complex issue, but we want, we were able to get actual Adams County data for you um, on that. But any other special session things before we scoot along?
The AI, I think they're gonna run it through ChatGPT to see if you're. We should do that, we should just run the draft between into all these different AIs and just see what comes back, let's see if anyone get like defensive, you know?
This is bad.
They might get defensive.
Really should let AI free cheer. Gemini to Chat. I'm totally.
I'm sure somebody did that.
That's already, that's probably written by.
That's how, yeah, the bill was probably written by A I.
You will give us more freedom.
So we'll continue to give you email updates, and then we'll talk again in our virtual update on Thursday afternoon. But feel free to reach out if you're hearing things or if you have questions.
All right, good afternoon, everyone, um, as Jillian just alluded to, a lot of the human services work that will be happening. Um, ideally, in the special session, but probably waiting till a regular session, will be centered around defense. Um, particularly in the face of H R one. So a big chunk of that will be education to our state legislature, and making sure that everybody is really well informed about the impacts to the county. Uh, as well as the various technical natures of, of what we do. And, um, just the minutia that, that will be impacted by H R one. So a lot of that work has already started, and I know that a lot of you, um, have been listening in on some of these sessions. But just as a reminder, the, the major impacts that we are expecting to see will be in the realms of Medicaid, SNAP, and W O A. Under the Personal Responsibility and Work Opportunity, uh, Reauthorization Act? Reconciliation Act, I almost had it. Um, so those are the big pieces that we wanna really be making sure that we're educating our legislators, our particular delegation around, to make sure that they're really well informed. Heading into a session as they are crafting their bills that may or may not be, um, helpful in, in our defense against the. Uh, really drastic impacts of H R one. So the policy priorities will be centered around that, um, around guarding against any more unfunded mandates and added burdens on county administration. For an example, something that we're hearing is that, um, House Bill twenty five twelve seventy one, the foster, they're the social security benefits for foster youth. Um, that only included survivor benefits last session. We are hearing that that will be coming back this session, uh, to expand disability benefits. So making sure that people are as well educated as possible around why that would be very difficult for us. Uh, really, uh, reminding people that the reason we fought so hard for a long runway last year is because this is incredibly complex work. That will take a lot of training, uh, to get right, uh, potentially increases in F T E. And this is really not the time to be adding complexity to the work of our already really thinly stretched county staff.
Yes, clarification, did you say it's coming back in special session or twenty six?
Regular session.
Money. Complexity equals money, and if they wanna pay for it, that's one thing. If they don't have the money to pay for it, they need to understand, I mean. That we don't have, there's no pot of gold at the end of any rainbow in any county in Colorado. That. Despite the good intentions, if they can't pay for it, why do they think we can't?
I think this should just go after.
Property taxes have gone down, we have less money than we did a year ago.
They should just go after the Jared Polis Bridge Fund.
Dibby that up.
Or maybe they can indemnify us for all the work we do for human services at their direction, that they audit, they give us direction how to do. And then if we screw up, or we, somebody says, say we did, we have to pay for it.
But, but I mean, the complexity is a concern, but I mean, also just, just money, it's money, it's, it's money that doesn't exist, the money doesn't exist.
Our, our defense language in the sense of H R one just doubled our workload.
Yes.
Yeah.
And that's money, and then this, this workload is more money. And we're, we can't possibly do it well, do both things well with no money. Um, and we're going into a special session because they're cutting a billion dollars from the budget.
Yes.
So, um, just, you know, threading that needle of, we understand. More, more than most, our, our caseworkers understand that people need help.
Yes.
Uh, but that doesn't make, make it that we can do things twice as fast, uh, with less people and less funds. And, um, no time. And so just, I think, reminding them of all of these other timelines that have now been imposed by the federal government will be really important in all of our conversations. Saying, we also think that disability benefits are probably something that everyone should talk about someday, but right now, we are in crisis management mode. And we need to, we need a little bit of grace from the state to take a second to say, oh, yeah, we can, we can wait. A second.
Well, in, in addition to complexity equals money, which is absolutely correct, really helping them to understand that complexity actually can. Hurt the kids that they're trying to help, right? Like, the more complicated a pr- uh, procedure is for redetermination or eligibility checks, right? If, if that's done wrong, that can actually wind up harming a kid's future for collecting benefits down the road, and that is the last thing anybody wants. So really driving both of those points home, that like, we are here for the same reason, right? We are all wanting to do the same things, and again, H R one is making it more expensive, more difficult. With fewer resources and, in theory, fewer people to do those things. A lot of that will be the, the SNAP, uh, human error rate, education, really driving it home that, um. You know, we, we heard at C C A last week, someone say, you know, oh, our, our air rate is so high, we're below the national average in this state. Um, that air rate is, that provision of the bill is not designed to do anything other than save money, right? That pair is not actually a measurement of fraud, it is not a measurement of how well county employees are doing their job. It is not a measurement of anything other than sometimes humans make mistakes, and that includes the clients. Sometimes the, the, uh, the sophomore makes mistakes because it's not actually keeping up with rapidly changing federal guidelines. Um, really informing people that to get from nine point nine seven where we are down to five point nine nine, that work has started, but that's gonna be. Tremendously difficult, and we're asking more of people with really complex jobs that are emotionally draining. Um, that don't pay them a lot of money, and we're asking them to do it better with less help. So, the, the pair is a really great example of that, because that's where, uh, we're really getting dinged on state match. Um, but we want folks to know that twenty eight states and D C have higher rates than we do, right? Like, we are doing a good job, and we wanna make sure that people know that this is, this is a gotcha from this legislation and, and nothing else.
I'm gonna just go, so you can talk about.
Yes, absolutely, um, so, some other things, uh, a lot of this is part of that education effort. These are some events that we are, we're up there, you can see events, or engagements that we've already done, Katie McDougall has done a lot of. Speaking with the legislature already, and in terms of everything we're talking about, these are two events that we're planning. Um, September is Workforce Awareness Month, and let me correct myself, we are not actually planning that, we are helping, um, Jody from the Workforce and Business Center collaborate on that. They wanna do an event that really showcases the great work that the W B C does, connecting people to employment and showing people that. Um, we are really trying to get people working. Kind of play, uh, play up that narrative, right, and really, really show off the success that we have with that. That date is a Friday, September twenty sixth, we know that that is a very challenging date for the board. And, uh, we just wanted to let you guys know that the goal of this is to, uh, is to really do some federal advocacy. And with, in conversation with our lobbying team, our federal lobbying team at D G A, we thought it was important to try to aim for that date. Um, because there's a better likelihood that we could get members of our federal delegation there, specifically someone to come speak to W O A. And its importance, uh, at the federal level. So, uh, we're hopeful that maybe the scheduling gods will align, and that will be an easier event for you guys to go to. But just wanted you to know that that is why, um, that date was selected. Uh, there will be awards and for employers and employees, a panel to talk about the benefits of this work and an employer resource expo after. So hopefully, scheduling gods will align.
Thanks, so.
There's a number of trips that we got, yeah. And then the other one that we are planning, um, ourselves is a Human Services one oh one day. That will be at our building, we'll do a brief tour of the building, but the purpose of that is really to. And educate our state delegation on everything that we were just talking about, and really connect them to the human element of the work that we do. To remind them as they go into regular session that this work really needs to be top of mind, and they need to understand. The impacts of any bills that they're bringing forward, um, helpful or harmful on this work and why it is so critical. So client and staff testimonials ideally will be walking people through, um, what it, uh, an eligibility determination looks like. Why that's so complicated, why C B M S so important to have us running well. Um, to really help our staff, especially as we face H R one and, and the new complications, um, of eligibility and redetermination. We'll have a panel on the fiscal strains that they're, that we're facing, um, I'm really hoping that Nick Bestin will be able to come out and walk people through. Uh, the nuts and bolts of why we are in this state that we're in, just like we did yesterday. Uh, we are gonna extend that, that invite to our entire state delegation, and that save the date ideally will go out this week. So that will be October eighth in the afternoon, and that is on your calendar, and we did check to make sure, uh, with Michelle and Lindsay, that that is a better date for you all. So that's something that you all should be able to come to.
Right.
Lastly, these are just some, the proposals that other counties have brought forward to C C I, it is only these three. Because again, all county human services departments are really in defense crisis management mode. Uh, all of these center around helping us out fiscally, ideally, in the short and long term. So things like requiring that, uh, legislative fiscal analysts would incorporate a hard dollar amount into any fiscal notes for any bills. It would also require a five-year look back at unfunded mandates. A lot of counties, including us, have started really compiling that so we can present to the legislature in hard dollar amounts. Look, like, this is the strain that we're under, this would help with that. Um, another one would be revising the Child Welfare Prevention and Intervention Services Cash Fund right now. That sits within the Department of Early Childhood, this bill would be bringing that fund back under C W A C control. So that we could use it to actually prevent foster care, um, involvement, which is, was the purpose of those dollars in the first place. And then lastly, uh, and those are two that we have chatted with our staff about that we would be supportive of. And then the last one is addressing county, client, county flexibility and funding. Right now, we are not legally able to address, uh, SNAP backfill from the county perspective. This would tweak that so that we would be able to, curious to see what comes out of special session and that H S M A ballot initiative. That would, that would put money towards that backfill, so we're kinda waiting to see where that lands after special session.
Um, one of the things that came up, um, last week at C C A was, um, and Emma brought this up actually, was a C D M S reform. Work, like, how is anybody talking about with the increased work burden that we have? Can we have a better system to use? I understand it's a lot of money, and it's a huge investment, that's probably never gonna go anywhere, but, um.
The state is working on it.
Okay.
They do have like an active work group on C B M S and figuring out stuff. Um, I think two years ago or a year ago, it was, there was a study passed, and then there's a, you know, action steps after the study. Um, so they are, it is in the works, but not on this, not as a specific response to H R one, of course, because it just happened. But that's also something that we've included in our talking points to share with the legislature, to remind them, because I think. To be candid, we, you know, in conversations with legislative members, you know, they, they say, we know that C B, we know about C B M S, we know it's bad. And, um, it is, I think, just another way, and a more, maybe a more intriguing way to say it, to say. We, we know that you know C B M S is bad, but now with H R one, it's directly targeted. Um, you know, like, our, our funding is even, is directly targeted because of C B M S outages and C B M S issues, our error rate goes up. Um, and if we could fund the, that system better and repair it better, that could be a way that we directly address the error rate. That is gonna be.
Hanging over our head.
Yeah, and it's, it's gonna be taking money from us.
And it's also looking at the cost of not replacing it, because it's not that that, that system's not maintaining itself. There are people constantly working to keep that system up and functioning, and that, that's staff hours. That's, that's time and resources spent on just, so it's, you know, and, and we all understand it's good, throwing good money after bad, because you just, it's just to keep it going. And, you know, there is that inflection point, but also if it's jeopardizing federal funding, that's, that puts a huge.
Well, and the impact on, on eligibility, right, so when, when there is an error, people are shut out of the system. Like, and so those impacts are even more profound. And so when we wanna talk about, hey, we wanna keep as many people enrolled as possible, all these errors are actually pulling people. Out of our system, and we're essentially barring them for future services. So, I mean, the impact is not, i- is, is a higher level now, so.
And last summer, we partic- uh, Katie participated in the, unlike last summer, sorry, there's been so many interim, and it was last summer. There was an interim, or maybe it was two summers ago, there was an interim session where we talked specifically about C B M S, like, where we talked about. Um, and counties went in and we talked about how, you know, it went down for nine hours this month. That means that forty thousand people were impacted, it, those, those kinds of numbers, and so we do have that, and I think. That's something that we wanna bring back and incorporate now, um, to bring it back to their intention, uh, their attention in a different, in a different light. Because now it will, the state will see less money.
Exactly, yeah, if we can't get our error rates down, it costs everybody.
Yeah, so.
Well, I think that's something also that I know, I mean, hip puff, their major North Star right now is ensuring against inappropriate losses of coverage. And this is the place where this happens.
Yes, yes, yes.
So I know that, like, that is something that they will be speaking with, with both legislature and the governor's office about a lot, and that's something that we can work with them on.
That's true, I agree, yeah, that's, I know, I'm glad, really glad, focusing on that, because that really helps, well, it's critical for all of us, but it's.
And I think just.
Plays out across the spectrum.
The, the, the message that we got from, um, the legislators on last week were, oh, we know it's bad. Well, that's great, that's fantastic, but that's like your understanding, but I don't think you understand how bad it's going to get.
Circles back to the conversation earlier on a different topic, which is not an answer that we wanna give people and said, and so that we wanna accept from people either. Like, we know it's bad.
And I think that's something that came up then, and I've heard in a couple of other places as well, is, um. We can't fix C B M S, we need to start with something new. And I think doing that at this time would be, um. A very large undertaking that I'm not sure would actually work out. I think that's, you know, that's a big project that we have, we're, we're already very anxious about folks, training folks. Um, any new folks that we would have, you know, training people on new requirements, new federal requirements, that, uh, a new system would be. Lot.
Yeah.
Be a lot, and more money than, I don't know where that would come from, so.
Um, on that positive note, we're gonna move on to C D.
Awesome, okay, so as Julian mentioned, there are kind of two buckets here for these, this kind of handful of ideas. So one is gonna focus more on kind of regulatory authority, licensing, things in kind of that realm. And then the second, um, kind of section will focus more on economic development issues, um, and incentives, things like that. Um, and, you know, as we've been doing on these other policy proposals, we'll talk a little bit about what the idea is, kind of what some of those considerations might be. And hear from you all about what some of the, um, you know, prioritization, or how deep do we wanna go on some of these issues? So. Uh, let's go to the first one, okay, mandatory business licensing was, um, was one of these, um, on our regulatory list. So counties, as you all know, uh, unlike municipalities, do not have statutory authority to establish a mandatory business licensing program. Um, as, um, you know, folks who are around in twenty twenty one are familiar with Adams County and others. Um, really worked hard to establish a, essentially a voluntary registration program, um, coming, uh, happening during the pandemic. Uh, that was honestly incredibly useful for getting resources to, 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 um, to businesses during that difficult time. Um, some things to think about if we were to reapproach this issue and look to go towards more of a mandatory, almost municipal-like approach. Um, could see some enhanced regulatory compliance, um, maybe some better, um, customer confidence, knowing that the business is. Um, been licensed by the county, um, it would create a much more comprehensive and up-to-date business registry. We, we think the number of businesses in unincorporated Adams that participate in our, um, registration program is relatively low. Um, given that, um, uh, it's not required, not necessarily relative to other counties, just compared to a, you know, a comprehensive required system. Um, it would increase probably some administrative costs, um, for both businesses, and then there may be some. Um, some costs associated with the county to manage the program. I do know that, um, C D has been, you know, with the massage licensing and some other things that are coming down the pike, has been, um, beefing, you know, looking to beef up. It's, it's licensing, uh, capacity, but just another thing to consider. Um, and so, um, as you, as, you know, we've talked about in some of these other issues, this might be an issue we might wanna engage our C C I partners. About to see if there is a broader interest around counties, um, in doing this, because we may see some objections from. You know, some groups that, you know, whether it's the business community, the broader kind of business community, or, um, you know, even municipalities concerned about. You know, they always tend to get a little nervous whenever. You know, they always tend to get a little nervous whenever the unincorporated, you know, areas start to um, you know, start to look a little bit more like municipality. So anyway, all that to say is like, wanted to introduce this idea to you all and to see, is this something that um kind of have we, first of all, kind of framed this idea correctly? And does this seem like something we would want to kind of put high on our priority list?
And I'm not sure if everybody knows that in twenty one, the original proposal.
Yes, would have, yes.
Okay, compromises. Yes. From this.
Another point is that at the end, you may, when you see the full list, have a better sense of what your highest priorities are. So you don't have to say right now until you get through kind of to the summary slide, I would say.
Cool. Yep. Okay, so the next one we're gonna talk about is private social club um club regulation. Um, statutory, you know, under statutory authority, counties do not um have the ability to establish a licensing program for these private clubs that allows them to be audited, inspected um in a way that could result in that um license being suspended or or revoked. It's not something we currently have the authority to do. Um, obviously, this would um, you know, provide an opportunity to improve compliance um and some accountability in this sector. Um, could increase some administrative costs. Again, if there's, you know, just thinking along the licensing lens and it would be, uh, there are a lot of different kind of options in terms of how we might look at getting at this issue. Whether it's kind of focusing more on our existing authority within kind of liquor licensing or marijuana licensing. Um, this is an idea we have not had a lot of conversations with other, you know, at least I haven't had any conversations with other counties about to see if this is something they're interested in getting into. Um, this is kind of being presented to you from the kind of licensing perspective. There's also the kind of sheriff's office kind of law enforcement perspective about the ability to enter um and engage um some of these facilities under the the kind of laws and rules they operate under. But again, this was something on the list. We wanted to kind of throw up to the group as a as a potential opportunity for um more kind of uh county conversation to see if this is something that um other folks are also running into.
Do you want me to just go through all four?
Yeah.
Yes, beautiful. Okay, so this is a kind of combination of two issues here. We've got short-term rentals and the new county lodging tax bill that was passed last year. So as um you all are familiar with, um, in twenty twenty three, there were kind of further um clarification of the county and and further kind of advancement of the county's regulatory authority under uh to 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 manage short-term rental licensing. Um, you are gonna hear more in the fall on a specific presentation about our, you know, proposed um, short-term um rental licensing um approach. That's something that C E D is currently working on. Um, there was also a bill passed last year that I I know has been talked about a lot that um took the um the maximum lodging tax limit from two percent up to six percent for um for counties. As you all know, unincorporated Adams County does not currently have a lodging tax. It would need a um a ballot uh measure in order to, in order to do that. Um, but the reason these two issues are paired is that um there are not many um kind of hotels, motels um in at unincorporated Adams. So um applying that lodging tax to short-term rentals would be a more, a kind of robust um tax revenue approach. So anyway, just want to float this as um something that probably doesn't fall within the s- the state legislative policy proposal priorities, because it's something we already have quite a bit of authority to do. What we'd need to kind of think about how we want to align both our short-term rental um kind of licensing approach and a potential um you know, if there's interest in in pursuing a lodging tax. Um, those two things kind of go together in that sense. Okay, so next one on the list, um, there have been a lot of concerns, a lot of discussions, a lot of news stories about metro and special district district, both eminent domain authority and dominant eminent domain authority have both been big issues. Both in exercising those authorities in general, but also exercising those um uh, those kind of rights outside of district boundaries. Um, this has been something that's come up um in a in a couple different places across the state, including in Adams County. There was a bill introduced last year. It did not get very far. It was introduced late in session. Um, that was a Denver water priority related to the ability for metro districts to use dominant eminent domain authority in home rule cities and counties. So the ability to take public land. Um, and that bill um did not advance. There wasn't much discussion about it. I would expect something like this to to come back around. There's a lot of discussion about um this. There have been court cases that have kind of further clarified um the ability for metro and special districts to use this. Um, obviously, the S D A and those associated groups would be very interested and very um probably adversarial if something like this moves forward. But it is something for you all to consider as um something to maybe wade into with um with other counties who may be running into similar challenges associated with the authority these um metro and special districts have.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say that last year's bill is different than the one that
Yes.
I expressed. Um, last year's bill only dealt with public property.
Yeah.
Um, what's the the magic term?
Dominant.
Dominant.
Yes.
I'm I'm not tracking.
Eminence.
Yes.
To me, can you explain that everything dominant and non?
To give you the the layman, but if the if the.
Honestly, it was something I didn't even know about until like two years ago.
The the general understanding is that um from from my read of um this issue has been that eminent domain authority is about taking private property and dominant eminent domain authority is about taking public property. Um, and like you said, thirteen thirty four.
Take this parcel out here that we own.
Right.
But.
So it has to be a public entity that's the condemning authority first, and then they're condemning another public property.
For.
Unusual, but does occasionally happen.
And thirteen thirty four would have only applied to their ability to use that in home rule cities and counties. So it wouldn't have changed anything from the ability from a metro district to take um, you know, unincorporated Adams County land through eminent domain authority or dominant eminent domain authority. Um, yeah, so. Could use, it would have been nice to have two different terms there, but they just decided to add an extra adjective to it.
So I wasn't told the Pelizi thing that I'd ever even heard that distinction and that.
Okay. Yep, and then, okay, so then.
So the question is.
Yes. Oh, sorry, apologies.
About if this is something we want to.
This would be, uh, this is, this was kind of on the list as, hey, do we want to wade into the to the debate about limiting um metro or special and or special district eminent domain or dominant eminent domain authority? Um, because it has been such an issue that's kind of come up, um, where the the county's in a position often where it's like sorry, the metro district exists and it has said authority to do what it wants to do. Maybe specifically inside versus outside its boundaries. There are a lot of different kind of policy angles you could take here.
And what's your?
Let me, let me explain the difference. So as expected, the government only wants to, the governments only care about the dominant piece.
Yeah.
Meaning when somebody wants to take our property, let's say, they want to run a pipe through our property, then they have to get our permission. But my concern is what happened with the Pelizi farm last year, where the city was able to grant authority to a metro district within the city to then take property outside of the boundaries of the city and outside the boundaries of the metro district, going into unincorporated areas without even having to come to us. I mean, at the very least. And so I understand why, because you need to have the outfall, you need to have utilities get there. You're almost never gonna have um a utility, it's utilities always have a connection from A to B. You're never gonna get some of those utilities in the mind of something if you have to get permission along the way. But you, I'm gonna tell you, like, I think it's really hard for me to say that it was okay for a city in a metro district over here to grant this unlimited, like, I shouldn't say unlimited. Uh, to grant this power to take private property
Yeah.
from anyone on the path that they deem as approved by this city within this boundary, within this boundary of the metro district to be able to take property along the way, that just doesn't seem right. And it doesn't seem like, like at the very least, you should have to be able to get approval um and negotiate with the uh don't with the jurisdictions that are in the path.
Yes.
That's my opinion. I understand that our metro district friends and our builders and such, but I gotta tell you, when a metro district is predominantly run by the private industry, that's even more dangerous in my mind.
Yes.
When you have a city and a private-run metro district that will be giving each other that kind of a power, give granting that kind of power outside of their own jurisdiction. I I I have some serious, now I know the builders are gonna be like, how else do you expect us? But I'm telling you, that doesn't sit right with me. So if they bring back a twenty-five thirty thirteen thirty-four, I, do we, do we potentially say, let's, let's try to squeeze something in there? But I think it's beyond the scope of what they wanted at thirteen thirty-four for us to squeeze our little gripe. And so I just want to explain why I think this is something that needs to be addressed.
Got it.
And then we'll be some guardrails around that house.
Very important for us to be.
Thank you.
Keeping abreast of this.
Yeah. Okay, so then we have two, la- uh last two ones in the C E D bucket here are um related to kind of economic development. So um, one of the issues that was um put on the list was related aerospace incentives. I know that coming out of the Paris Air Show, um, the Commissioner Vaca and and um and Jenny and other folks were able to attend. There's, there's kind of a broader conversation happening around the state about um other states kind of coming for for a key industry that's been really um central to a lot of um Colorado economic development over the, you know, over the decades. Um, particularly relevant for Adams County, given that CASP is such a unique asset in the in the state, but um is often um, you know, many feel it's not taken advantage of enough by the state of Colorado and O E D. Um, I know coming out of that lightning round conversation about the Paris Air Show, there is gonna be discussion about, you know, we're gonna have a new governor in twenty twenty seven. There'll be new, you know, new folks at O E D. Um, there's a, you know, obviously, whenever you start talking about incentives, particularly anything that would be focused on a particular industry, um, it could be difficult, the upcoming budget kind of environment. Um, given that O E D's already, you know, took a lot of cuts last year and probably is gonna, is gonna face a lot of cuts this year. So just bringing this up because it was on the list, but I think it's something that likely falls outside of like, hey, Adams County's helping to run a bill on this next year. Seems more like something about building relationships with um with new folks in O E D, in the governor's office and in the legislature as we kind of approach twenty twenty seven. So did just want to flag it as something that we are definitely paying attention to, but um this next one, also you'll see an asterisk on it, um, because if you look towards the bottom, um, I believe we're on for September tenth now to discuss data centers. So um, I definitely don't want to get into too much detail today, given that we've got a few other things to talk about as well, but we all um, if you're, you know, paying attention to the news, it's a huge, huge part of the um of the economy, honestly, the the nation's economy right now. Lot of discussions around environmental, energy, economic development impacts in all, in lots of different directions. So really excited to have the conversation with you all um in a few weeks to talk about um kind of Adams County's approach to this issue. I will just flag that there have been um bills in each of the last several sessions to talk about data centers. The bill last year that we talked about would have um created a a sales and use tax exemption um for data centers in exchange for capital investment, job um and job creation requirements among a number of other things. So that's kind of summarized at the bottom here. Um, but we definitely expect, especially coming out of that conversation in September, after getting some kind of direction on on priorities and things we want to think about, to be engaging in these conversations as we approach the twenty twenty um six regular session where we expect again, more data center conversations to be had across, again, a wide range of um stakeholder groups from industry, environmental groups, economic development, uh utilities, why local governments, uh, it'll be a really kind of robust conversation this year, I expect. So that is the, that, those were the six um C D priorities. I'll get back to Julian to tackle the the last one here.
Yeah, and the health department is the last one, and then we'll go to the fullness. Um, I did just want to bring up the health department one as um, I connected with Michael Reddick, their policy director. He had just flagged for me that it was brought brought up to him by a commissioner, and I wanted to kind of just just bring it to you all, um, because it is something that, you know, falls um under uh health department, under the health department, but wanted to just gain some more clarity on um, what you all were hoping on this issue. I do know that um Representative Jackie Phillips um is really passionate about this issue as well and has worked a lot it with the mobile home parks, but any um advice or any, anything that you all wanted to share with me um first, and I can also always connect with the health department if this is something that we were hoping uh they would work on.
The issue, uh, this in in Ward one of Thornton, where Jackie was the representative and I was representative. Four of the cities, but most of the cities, mobile home communities are in that ward, and they are about fifty, they're oh, most, they're all fifty years old. So mobile home infrastructure is private. So the ones, they're on Thornton City Water, so clean Thornton City Water goes in there. The infrastructure that it runs through is not inspected or is not, is is not under, is not inspected by any, by admitting health department. It's not because it's on private property. It's that's the, which, it's it's the gray area that mobile home communities exist on it. And so they've had sewage leak it leaks and backups that have spilled into Niber Creek, which we had, Thornton also has a Niber open space park with, that the creek runs through. But the crux of the matter is, what is the recourse for the residents who live there, who often have a management representative in the office, who works for a corporation for an out-of-state owner? There was, there's M P O P, which I forget what that stands for, but it was passed a few years ago that was supposed to give and does give mobile home rest residents of mobile home communities the opportunity to file complaints and be protected against retaliation uh for while it's being investigated and and even thereafter. I don't but I do not think that that is actually given, because even the city of Thornton took one of the mobile home parks to their own municipal court, gave them a modest, flattened, flattened them with a modest fine, because there, there's just really hard to get at this. And because this is a public health and safety issue, I feel, and and this is infrastructure that impact people's daily lives. The idea is that how can this not be, this infrastructure legally remain hidden? Not, you know, with no inspection requirements and no requirements to be modernized or kept it any, in any particular sort of working order. And so I I don't know exactly, so, because M P O P does, I mean, people can complain, but that doesn't mean that this park is going to upgrade their their infrastructure, water, water and sewage infrastructure. So uh that's the idea behind this, is that there is some sort of oversight where they have to prove that, you know, they have to either be open. I mean, I don't know exact, I don't know exactly what, where we would land on this, but it's a public health and safety issue that people are living, they have no idea what what kind of what their pipes are. They have no idea to ask what it is. They can't get them inspected because it's private property, so on and so forth. Steve, you've been in these conversations. I'm 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 being long-winded. What points am I missing?
I think the bottom line is we're trying to figure out are there levers to make sure that we have collectively, regardless of who pulls the lever
Yeah.
to make sure that people are living in a safe, healthy environment. And the, the, there, there quite often are differences in mobile home communities uh that meet, that justify having specific mobile home community laws, meaning that applies specifically to them, because they don't always fit in where it's just an apartment building. They don't always fit in to where it's a home.
Right, who falls between the cracks.
It's it's a very.
Everything falls between the cracks and the uh power dynamics associated also, aside from the structural issues, power dynamics are very significant uh differences here. And so that's why I tend to support uh some laws in that context, mobile homes particularly, that that may not be as always as justified in other areas.
Yeah, because it has fallen between, I mean, the buck doesn't stop anywhere. And we, the the buck, the buck needs to stop. But that we have to create a backstop where it stops, so that people, so that we can um make sure that people are living in safe conditions.
So, I mean, I think the issue here is that we find out like if then of course, they're gonna ask for a penalty, um, but. Is it effective to implement a history just to get the law changed?
Probably implementation. Something else that y'all might want to consider is something that will arise when something like this comes up is the utilities will likely jump up. Uh, because the way that water and sewer is served to mobile home parks is there's a master meter that comes in. It's much the same way that water and sewer utilities come into the property line anywhere, then
Yeah.
supply line is always your responsibility as the owner. Anything that disrupts that bright line between master meter and supply lines generally gets the utilities hopped up. It's just something that would need to be dealt with ahead of time and talked with them ahead of time. And it's not necessarily just the cities, although that will be the case with them as well. Because it would be taking on a very Taking on a very large liability if it were ever determined that supply line becomes. A utility responsibility at any point, so it's just something if y'all do go down this road. Starting with the utilities is probably the place to go, um. But then truly crafting toward the mobile home park, I agree, would be. The best way to get that taken care of, and counties are able to highly regulate. You know, the things, the thing I have at my own house, you know, um, sewage. Know the other ones.
Got it, okay.
So, um, there's a whole system of regulation around septic system, which is a privately owned. System, so if that's true. How could it also be true within this context? So those are just a couple of things I would mention. It would be, it would be a, a rather challenging discussion. Once utilities are involved.
Kinda need to hear.
So I talked with the Health Department and they had said that they, they shared a document, um, kind of outlining. Their responsibilities, uh, and the state's responsibilities, municipal responsibilities, um, they haven't. Prioritize a policy solution specifically for this, but.
I mean, they clearly asked for an idea, but I haven't seen what proposal or solution they're asking.
I think, I think it would be, these are the things that they would imagine would be possible fixes to this problem, but if they, if this was something that. You know, would require health departments to do inspections, health departments to take on responsibility for. Specifically in mobile home parks, this is something that they, they would imagine would be a workload increase, this is something that is a little bit, uh, different, but I, I also. Wasn't in the other conversations, which is why I brought this, um. They had also asked, like, can you get clarity, is this something that the board wants to do a policy on, is this something that we should. Prioritize, um, or is it something, you know, I think it is such an interesting issue that overlaps with a lot of different issues. Um, and I just wanted to come forward to you all to see what, what possible next steps could have been or could be. And the information on here.
With the, with Levon and team and, and find out.
I think, yeah, this, yes, I mean, I'm glad, I'm glad they moved you into this, but this is a conversation that needs to happen with all, with all of us in the same room.
Yeah, and this, also the information on here is stuff that they had already shared, y'all, I didn't. Like, this was from that one feature.
Haven't had, we haven't had this, you know, very focused, like, okay, it's now August and session starts in January. What, what are we, what are we going to do? The idea, the idea, I mean, there was. I think it was Phillips who was. Kind of looking to, because she's been such a strong advocate for this. And I, I can talk with her, I haven't talked with her about this in, like, in a little while, I'm not, you know, but. I'm not sure that the, the MPOP legislation is actually solved for this. And that's why I was looking, looking at maybe that we need to do something else, and whether it's us or who, you know, um.
I mean, this is like. Kind of a warranty of habitability issue, it's kind of a health issue, it's kind of, I guess I like that last bullet point under options establish. Expand the, the definition of a nuisance. To include this type situation. But like, uh, in the, if we're trying to use familiar concepts, what happens in a situation of a hotel? Or an apartment complex?
If they have sewage leaks.
Yeah, we can't, the Health Department step in anyway.
Doesn't that come through the building department?
So the Health Department, uh, I'm, I might be kinda speaking out to her, I. Melissa, Melissa Sager is, is really the expert, but.
There's, we're not gonna solve it today, but these, but these are, this is, this is the conversation that you, you're hearing us, we're dancing around it, but we need the right people in the right room.
Exactly, and the right people in the right room should also include DOLA and C P H E, cause that's. I mean, they have regulatory authority today, I mean, they should be part of the table for a potential solution as well.
We all shared on that, uh, document, Department, and I think Melissa pulled together just outlining the difference.
I, I don't, I, I honestly, I don't know, I know I got it, but I don't know if I, I don't know if I was supposed to share it out.
At, at the end of the day today. It was shared with me and I'll, I'll share it around, we saw a couple months ago, Steve.
I don't know, that's what I gotta figure out.
I had like four squares. Levon wrote that, not up, but yeah.
Okay. This one we have identified is important to all of us, but we have some more internal work to do. Uh, and there's probably some existing authority that we could better utilize. Some agencies that are already kind of in this space, maybe not a legislative fix this year, but some, um, preliminary work that might. Help narrow and refine.
I mean, for example, like what the city of Thornton did was they, uh, we, we passed policy that said. You have to, you are property, we, Thornton residents live on your property, you need to. Flush your system once a year, and we need to see from a third party that you in fact did it. You flushed your, at the very least, because some of the problems were just from not, just not, uh, basic maintenance, you know, so that, so we did a couple, uh. And that, those were the things that we were trying to.
And you have the utility authority.
Very, it's really helpful.
It is easier when you're a city and you own it.
But like I said, that, that's not our infrastructure, that's their infrastructure, that's not our.
But you, their, their infrastructure attached to city infrastructure.
Trouble to your.
Utilities are a lot, that's a whole other.
I guess, uh, in this point is, if Adams County Health Department doesn't need the additional authority. And we could really just work through the authority already granted by other entities, then maybe that is the better way of going, I don't really know.
But how do we do it more effectively? What would it take to do it more effectively?
But that's why DOLA and C P H E have to be at the table. To help us understand.
That's what our preliminary conclusion was as well, and you can see these bullets here is to pull those groups together and look at what. Regulations the board health could potentially consider, but we will continue those conversations, but it didn't immediately look like a legislative issue.
Okay, so to me, it sounds like we may not have a specific task, but we might have some stakeholding. Just like you had an executive kind of sponsor involved, while dealing with other forms of nuisance, I would see.
Because where this.
The job of giving some stakeholding with some staff on the health side on this issue.
Because where this has gone is into, is into the, oh, it's, it's a DOLA and C P H E, and it poof, and go, and then, and then everybody. And the people in the, in living these mobile homes are not getting support or relief. From the, for the issue.
Did you, did you hear my?
And also, and that, you know, for example, somebody did fi- actually file a complaint, use the MPOP system, and then guess what? Nothing to manage, no, spoke to management and withdrew the complaint. So there's nothing, so that's the other thing that we, that has already happened and could potentially happen again.
Are you okay with the recommendation that, like, just kinda like how I said, I'll talk to the judge, sheriff, the DA, and then come back to staff? You do the same with the, uh, health departments?
The health, I've already spoken with our health department, but I will do it again.
Clarify if there's like a great, like, provide more clarity in specificity.
Jillian and I will attend with you and.
It's the next mail, we haven't been doing this leadership.
No, I told, I, I request.
We'll just loop in our team, the, so it's not just them. Sorry, I'm like, you want me to get all that up, thank you. And I'll send around that document so that it's at the top of everyone's inbox, um. I know we are wrapping up, so this is the full list of all the things that we talked about today. I do want to just, I'll, I'll come back to this, um, I wanna say that, um. We really wanna decide on priorities, I know there's only three of five of you right now, but, um. Staff wanted to share our recommendations that we really prioritize the civil infraction process, um, as our first next step is. Really leaning in and making sure that we're able to get those fixes, cause that's something that I think both the board has experienced the negative impact of. And staff has experienced negative impact of, as well as continuing, unsurprisingly, with our education advocacy around human services. Due to H R one and even before H R one was passed, the budgetary environment that is at the Capitol and kind of the legislative environment. Um, and so those were what we were really hoping to prioritize this legislative session for first action items. Um, alongside, I think after our conversations today, a lot of more base building stakeholder conversations to see where other interests lie. But wanted to bring it back here, just, we wanted to share our recommendations, then, um, I'll, I'm just gonna take some notes as you all. Talk through kind of maybe other things that we wanna make sure are kind of, I would assume the public nuance enforcement issue will be kind of that. That number two priority bucket.
Is the, the public nuisance?
Yes.
And I say nuance.
There is nuance in the nuisance. I need to understand, I'd like to ask Heidi to follow up.
She's honor correcting.
I think what, what I'm gonna ask Heidi to do is figure out, like, there's massage parlors, there's adulterated businesses. And then there's this weird thing called gentlemen's clubs or whatever, like private social. Like, what is it?
Sorry, I meant to change it all to private, social clubs, the, the gentleman clubs are like an Adams County specific. There has been one that has popped up, I don't know what they call themselves.
The issue is that these private clubs, law enforcement cannot get in without probable cause. Right, whereas a normal. Strip joint, whatever law enforcement can go in, cause they're public. Um, so that has been, that has been the issue. Um, I'm not aware of the specifics on these particular clubs, but I know that has been an issue for the sheriff's office in terms of, we suspect things are happening in these places. But we can't go in, and nobody's coming out saying this just happened, to give them probable cause to go in, right?
So what's your ask?
So the private social clubs.
My, my question is, as we cast a wide net with massage parlors, as we cast a wide net with business licensing. Could some of these get caught in those nets, be included in those nets, or do we need to be more specific? Now, cause by being more specific.
Business licensing, wouldn't that include any of these social clubs if they make money, right?
You could make categories within and specific things within without.
A lot of those businesses, when you're overseeing municipal licensing, uh, they don't come to you sometimes.
Oh, no, that, it's the same issue we're having now with our voluntary. You have to figure out, uh, what are, how do you mandate?
How you get it, oftentimes, since it is mandatory, they will come to you if they have. Other needs, like liquor licensing or things like that, but quite commonly, if they don't, you have to go find them, and that's.
That's so true. Yeah, and then the question is, as a consequence, I'm just wondering that if.
Like maybe start with general business licensing and see if that gets caught in that net.
Right, but also like, we're gonna be coming back and talking about hours of operation of adult businesses, correct?
Yeah, I mean, but these don't, these don't fall under that.
Well. But, but if we change the definition of what adult businesses is to say that.
Statutory definition, that doesn't include these.
Private social clubs are not considered adult businesses?
Not adult oriented businesses, i- in terms of the definition and the, the ones who are allowed to regulate.
I mean, how would you define what we're trying to address, which is human trafficking and illegal activity going on in these locations?
You know, ideas of these private clubs, we don't know what they're doing. I don't know if you pay a fee or not to be part of this club, but there's no. That's my understanding of the problem, right, so some of these places that we have in the one, federal or Washington, that have bars on the windows, that's. When the sheriff knocks on the door, they say, we're a private club in here. So we don't know what they're, that's my understanding.
It's not like they're, they've got a sign outside that says.
We offer these services.
And in a private club, you can serve liquor as long as you're not selling it and not have to have a license.
It's also, I mean, there are limits on what you can do, there's a reason why gambling reigns are brought down because theoretically. They're trying to protect, I guess my question is, can you guys look around and ask how other counties are handling issues with these private clubs? And see if they, they are dealing with, how they handle, whether it's, regardless of what the illegal activities, whether it's sexually in nature or gambling. Or other sorts of things, there's a lot of things that are not supposed to happen in certain businesses, and. Unfortunately, some of these actually do have a negative impact on neighborhoods.
Quick question, so are private social clubs considered businesses?
It depends on if they admit that they make money, right, or is it like, oh, this is just me and my buddies and. It's not a for-profit business.
If they even file.
It's, it's like unsanctioned rodeos, it's like, uh, to see, un- unsanctioned casinos that are operating illegally. People running numbers all like. It's like anything else, that's why I'm asking to see how they're handling it.
Uh, yes, and it seems like mandatory business licensing authority would also be something that.
It might help, yeah.
That could help.
I think that's something s- even separate from this conversation, is in our best interest.
It is.
And so I would like to pursue that.
That's what I'm hearing, business licensing.
Yeah, business licensing.
I may not be able to participate much in that, cause part of, I was part of the discussions on the compromise.
Well, you get what you can, you can. Just clarify that for kind of like. Research, starting the conversation, starting, seeing what other counties are doing, we have business licensing, and you want the. Nuisance enforcement as well in that same bucket.
I mean, I think what I heard though was that the civil infraction go after now. The nuisance is more of a start the conversations both internally and with our peers about what the.
For, for business and for private, you know, for residential property or, or, or res- or residential property that is. Allowed to have big home-based businesses, things like that, um, which, you know. Looking at our different zoning.
So what if I, like, I like how you put it, so there's a couple of specific things. The grand and, there, no. Let's look into, let's look into supporting those very specific things. And then also at the same time, starting our stakeholding with some of these others about the bigger, broader thing of, what does it take for us to get the same level of power? As the cities and or add us to the list of authorized and. Prosecution enforcement, that's covered, that's not gonna happen.
Other counties are interested in that.
I think so too, I guarantee you, other counties are having the same problem that, that they're. Getting flack from their community by saying, I can tell when I'm in the city and when I'm not. Very embarrassing, it's even more embarrassing when we have our own staff sometimes say, well, you gotta expect less, we're not a city. And that just drives people nuts. We please make sure that message is not.
Some neighborhood meetings, isn't it, that's, that's, they love that.
So, um, for kind of the, the other things, we're just gonna put them as, we're, we'll do some follow-up, some more research, like, just. We're not gonna throw them out, no, there are no things on here that you guys no longer care about, we're just gonna keep them kind of in that next phase and so that we can. Really prioritize digging deep into these issues as we move into this session.
Did we make it to the end?
We had this other day.
That's the end.
We did it, great job, thank you all for all of your work today.